Mount, under School District. Dollar amount.
Your labels, yeah, there's no dollar amount label.
It just appeared somewhere between my looking at it and printing it.
Okay. It was magic.
Wow, should've noticed that before. Can I get that?
Okay, um, let's, uh, we'll call the meeting of the Board of Trustees here for the Village of Cambridge, December tenth, uh, nine, uh, two thousand and nineteen to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Christensen.
Here.
Cunningham. Whitmore.
Here.
Breenig.
Here.
Colin Beck. Cumbier. McNally.
Here.
Okay, can we please stand and cite the.
Chair.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ladies, can you share with us, uh, what you've done here with posting?
Um, the agenda was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundson Community Center, Cambridge Post Office, the Hometown Bank, and the Village website.
Okay, all right. Moving on, um, we're gonna get an update, uh, from one of our new neighbors, uh, the Dancing Goat Distillery. And, uh, Mike, why don't you come up to the table and if you have anybody with you?
For, I'd like to, and the members of the board, I'd like to introduce Tom Moss. Tom's the chairman of the Dancing Goat. Obviously, uh, last week, we introduced Bo Bunce and also Nick Moss, uh, as our director of innovation, or VP of Innovation in Distilling. So, uh, we appreciate the opportunity to come be in front of you today and just talk to you a little bit about what we have had going on in twenty nineteen. Uh, and I think he's over.
You want me to talk into the mic, sir?
Yep.
That way the people in TV land can hear you.
Oh, TV.
That's what the mic is for.
Well, I'll keep it short, uh, sweet, 'cause I'm a viewer, not a talker. Um, and I don't have a face for TV, so I'm gonna try to get out of here. But this year, a lot of things happened for us, the goat. Um, you know, our business partner Travis Hazy moved on to other ventures. My family took full possession of the Dancing Goat, um, by my father here, who I'm representing. Again, we just wanted to say thanks for having us. Um, we've invested a lot in this community, and we are ready and willing to invest more. Um, and we're really excited to do it. We think Cambridge is a great place to live, and we wanna do our part to keep making it a great place to live. Um, so far, my business has been really focused on a user experience in Cambridge, and we think it's a pretty good one. But, um, my father's other businesses and my family's other businesses have always focused on putting products on store shelves, um, worldwide. And really, the Dancing Goat for us, we're trying to make it a place more that focuses on education and consumer engagement rather than onsite consumption. And so, we're really excited to really perpetuate that goal forward in twenty twenty. And we just wanted to come and say thanks for everything you guys have done for us and having us with open arms. This marks the beginning of our third year open to the public and our fifth year here in Cambridge. And we just wanted to say thanks a lot for having us.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I think you're a great addition to the community.
Thanks, appreciate that.
Glad to see you keep going.
I just wanted to say thank you for welcoming us into the community. Um, I talked to Lisa today and told her that, uh, I'm from a small town. I grew up in Shawno, up in northern Wisconsin. And, um, um, I appreciate small towns, I really do. I really get a kick out of it. I come up from Chicago when I come up twelve, and I see the Cambridge sign with fourteen fifty-seven residents, and I think it's, it's wonderful, small towns. I really, we had the opportunity, we told Lisa this today, we were offered properties in Madison. And, uh, you get a lot more traffic there, but it's just, it's, there's no, there's no environment. It's just, you know, it's just a, a building, it's blocks and a wall. What we appreciate about Cambridge is the atmosphere here, you know, and, and the, the sense of community. And, and we just wanna make sure that you understand, we wanna do all we can to be a successful business, but we also wanna do anything we can to fit into the community here, so. We appreciate, uh, everything, uh, you guys do. We know this is a thankless job to sit on that side of the, of the thing sometimes, but, um, we appreciate it. And would, never be afraid to ask us for anything, 'cause we, we, we just wanna do whatever we can to make this community better. Okay.
Well, we thank you for coming on, letting us know.
Now, Mike's gonna tell you exactly what we're doing, we just said thank you.
So I, I, I brought the backups to take center stage here. I think, uh, in the last year, we've been here a couple times to talk about the things we have going on at the goat. It has been, um, a very exciting time. Nick and Tom have given me lots of things to focus on and then do due diligence and then have those conversations. And I think that we're continuing to do that as we move forward. We have, uh, successfully completed our initial building plan, uh, that started with a little presentation that we did here in front of you guys, uh, and it has been approved by the state. So we have, uh, submitted that, uh, to, uh, the Planning Commission to get the city bill permit. So we're on the cusp of getting that done, we're just filling out the paperwork and everything right now. So, um, it's kind of a, a long process, but we have done a lot of things in the meantime. And, and we're pretty excited about where this next chapter opens up for us. It gives us the opportunity to celebrate what we do. I mean, how many people get to make spirits for a living? That's still one of the coolest things about this job. Uh, and so, we take every little win as a, an opportunity to celebrate. You know, the things that we're doing, uh, are grand in lots of ways, but simple in others. And the fact that, uh, we get the opportunity to innovate and take things to a new level, uh, on a very frequent basis, I think is one of the most challenging and rewarding parts of the job and opportunity we have. We feel like we have a growing following because we do one thing well, and that's produce a quality spirit. If it doesn't have the quality stamp that people accept it and, and support it with their dollars, it's really just another brand that will fade into oblivion, but we haven't seen that. We've had great success, and we look forward to twenty twenty continuing to be another year of, uh, resounding success for the Dancing Goat. And again, because they're both behind me, but honestly, uh, I've worked for lots of different people. Having the opportunity to build, uh, and help create the legacy that their family brings to the table has been, uh, probably one of the most professional, rewarding aspects of all jobs I've ever had. So I think that our foundation is strong, uh, we know where we're going, we know how we wanna do it, and, uh, the deciding part is now we're, uh, getting ready to kick off twenty twenty and make things happen. So, hope that helps out. Yes, sir?
Mike, how's, uh, Death Store? You've made that acquisition, how's that going for you guys?
Uh, we've been making Death Store gin at the distillery since, what, May?
June?
June, into July. July, yeah.
Figure out the recipe.
We brought the, brought the equipment over, got it cleaned up and reinstalled. And in July, we started producing the Death Store branded gin, uh, in the Dancing Goat Distillery. And then we were able to bring it in in December? No, November.
November.
November, uh, we got the okay to actually sell it locally in the distillery. So that's kind of benchmarks of the transition and realignment and all those, um, uh, administrative processes you have to go through. It took us a little bit of time, but we're very happy to have that now on, uh, on the back bar. It's up on the, uh, on the product shelf. So it's, uh, kinda nice to see those baby blue bottles sitting up on the back wall and, uh, seeing them go out in the stores as well.
And then one last question, how you doing? I don't hear anything but regulatory, uh, problems, complications? You guys are.
We're in good shape. We're in good shape. We, like I said, we continue to focus on the things that, uh, keep us out of trouble, which is do what you do, do it well, uh, make sure that you're buttoned up. I think that's been one of the most, uh, exciting aspects, is that there's a lot of other people who are getting a lot more attention, and not, not all of that is good sometimes. So to, to just take care of business and go to work every day and keep taking care of business is a great way to start the morning off.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for your report.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity, thank you again.
All right. Okay, moving on, um, approval of the consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion necessary?
Um, one of them, the police didn't mark.
Yeah, it, that came in on Friday, they have since.
So it is recommended?
Recommended it.
Great, thank you.
Okay. We have an approval and a second for approval, uh, or we have a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Oring none? It has been approved. Moving on, President's Report, we've got three items here. There was a, I'll start with, uh, Fire and EMT, and Chris, I'm gonna ask that you, you were there as well. The, um, we had a meeting this last week on, um, December fourth, and, um, all the commission members were there. And, um, it started off with three proposals from various contractors. They are, there, there is a feeling there they wanna move ahead with a new fire station. And, uh, a great deal of, uh, new construction and possible renovations of some old. And, um, they had the three proposals. I will tell the board and anybody else, um, I voted for one of the proposals, and it did ask for fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, that was the modest amount, uh, the most modest, 'cause the next contractor wanted fifteen thousand, and a third contractor didn't say anything. Now, the reason I voted for that proposal, or that particular contractor, it was Keller, is because they've been working on Fort Atkinson, and it's taken them two and a half years, and they still aren't actually building anything yet. So I felt that that was a, you know, as much as you're gonna get, you gotta look at the, uh, the way this is gonna go down. Um, but that was a, um, they're, they're moving ahead with that. So I did advi, uh, warn them, uh, I brought it up. I don't know how this is gonna go through with a bonding referendum. Um, we've got a school referendum that, you know, has been, um, talked about. Uh, there are others that feel that we should have a, a capital budget and an operating referendum here for the Village of Cambridge, and now we have got the Fire and EMS, uh, that's gonna be putting a referendum through. And there was some talk that this could be decided at just the respective boards, and, uh, I don't think it can. I think that has to go out, uh, for a, a vote. And then the question becomes, what happens if one of the communities votes for it, or one of the municipalities votes for it, and the others, uh, maybe foredo and one doesn't? And does that cause a termination of their involvement? So that was, uh, part of the, uh, the financial discussion. I also had, uh, Chris.
So, so I was there at that meeting as well, and this, this is the problem I'm, I'm having with this. Even though I was, I sat through that meeting, here we are as a board in receive-only mode, which is, you know, we, we now have a contractor on board. Yes, it's only fifteen hundred dollars, but I, I'm in construction, and I know how that works. You know, fifteen hundred dollars is, is just your foot in the door, and it's gonna go. So here we are as a board, and all we have is, here's your, you know, here's what we're doing. What choice do we have as a board? Other than just, just to take the information in and, and write the check?
So is, is that fifteen hundred dollars, an additional fifteen hundred dollars versus what? Or is that's coming out of their budget?
Budget.
Okay, then.
Right.
They can do what they want with their budget, and when they run out of money, they run out of money. I mean, it's unfortunate, but, uh, it, it, now, if it comes to the point where they're gonna ask us for more money?
Right, but this.
Then that's where I've got real big concerns.
This, this goes right into what you stated here.
Yeah.
Versus, you know, understanding that this should be a team conversation vice them dictating to us.
Yep.
And that, that's my issue with it, so.
All I can do, all we can do.
Is vote no.
Well, we can vote no, and we can try to, um, to educate, um, individuals, um, other participants that are on that committee. And, um, I, I don't wanna go any further because I don't know about withdrawal from that commission itself.
No, I don't.
That, that would be, um, difficult. But I expect that from here on out, every dime that is spent, certainly every dollar, is gonna be scrutinized. And, um, that gets me kind of into the next point, which is, um, I listed, I, I had some concerns, and I still do, and I'll share with you three or four of those. Number one, um, we didn't get the budget this year, the number that the, um, that that, um, joint commission wants from the Village of Cambridge until, I think it was October eighth, October ninth. And if you go back and you look at that intergovernmental agreement, now, that thing was originally drafted in nineteen fifty-one, and it was, um, recently signed, uh, in two thousand and eighteen. But it does call for the Fire and the EMS both to give a draft budget by September first and have a vote on that, um, by October, uh, first. Now, that doesn't happen, it may not happen, and if it doesn't, then there's some other provisions in there. But we did not get a draft. I've talked to a party there, and he asked that, uh, you know, you just keep in mind that the, you know, the later you go, the better the information will be. And so, you know, that's why we shouldn't be looking for it in, uh, on September, uh, second, that they have, they should have more time. My response to that is, you know, if we wait until December thirty-first, I'm sure we're gonna get even fresher information. Unfortunately, it puts us behind the whole budgeting process. And I saw what we went through. So I have asked that they, uh, remind themselves, and I will, that that budget needs to be, that proposed budget needs to be given to us so that we can get that back, uh, to our own Board of Trustees.
If we're held to the provisions of that intergovernmental agreement, then they should be held to the provisions of that intergovernmental agreement. And they can't use an excuse of, you'll have better, better numbers if you let us wait longer. The agreement is the agreement, and if, if we have to give them the amount of money they ask for because that's what it says in the agreement, then they need to live up by those, those same rules.
Okay. Capital budgeting was right in there, that was another part of this. Uh, we have a capital budgeting, and they're doing it for two years, but it really calls for five. And, uh, that's on equipment, and that's on building, and that's whatever they need. But they're not doing it, and I believe that they should be looking at a five-year capital budget. Something that's probably gonna make the paper, I don't know for sure, but, um, if you go back and you look at this budget, in two years, to the Village of Cambridge, our investment, our, our outlay to that Fire and EMT commission has gone up one hundred and twenty-two percent in two years. Now, as a frame of reference, we contract out with police, and we share that with Deerfield, and police has gone up fifteen percent in two years. Now, they are talking, as far as the Fire and EMT, they wanna bring on more full-time. And I'm hearing that as far as the Fire, they are going to be going full-time there in two years. Uh, they need more equipment, and then on top of that, they have the building. So I don't know where this money is gonna come from, um, but I, I have brought it up, and I will continue to, um, to ask those questions, uh, to make sure that, you know, we've got something that we're not, we're not stuck with taxing people right out of our doors. That is, uh, those are staggering amounts, and, um, they don't have a, a clear, a clue on, on where it's gonna stop. Chris?
There's a couple other items on there. Uh, you asked the question about, when was their last audit done? It was crickets. No audits have been done.
Yeah.
So I think we need to go back and ask that question again, um, from a village perspective. We have to be audited yearly, right? So I would think that, uh, since they're getting village money, that we should expect that at least quarter, you know, every other year or something to that. Second, um, two new ambulances coming in this spring. What was the price tag on those?
I don't know, was it a hundred and five? I'm not sure.
They got them under, under a hundred thousand.
Okay.
The original was, but, I mean, two new ambulances, and then that perpetuates, well, now it's gonna be a tighter fit, and then we're gonna have safety issues, and is this a safe building to work in, and, and whatever the case is. So I, I asked the question as a constituent at this committee, commission meeting about, uh, you know, I go to Piggly Wiggly, or I go to Marketplace, or whatever, and people ask me, why do we need it right now? Why do we need this fire department right now? You know, because language in that Fire Commission meeting was being put out as, we need this quick. We need it quick, so people can make a decision. So people can make a decision for what? Well, we have a school referendum out there. So let me get this straight, so are you, are you asking for, uh, competing referendums? Is this where we're going for? No, 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 we're not going for competing referendums, but we just want people to be able to make a, a decision on what they want to support. I don't, I don't like the language of that, I don't like the way that sounds. Any, anytime we have competing referendums, um, that puts our school in a situation that they've already done the legwork for. So my question to that commission, and it still is, and I didn't get a, a answer other than a angry response that there's safety issues with the fire department, is why do we need it right now? And I, and I would leave, leave my comments with, why do we need this fire department upgraded right now?
Okay. I'm hearing you, um, and I'm asking the same questions, let me go back, though, um, on the audit. There is mention of an audit, now, I've read that agreement probably fifteen times over. And, uh, there, it mentions it, but it only mentions it if a municipality is going to be leaving.
Right.
It doesn't ask for it in terms of ongoing financial stewardship. So they don't have an audit. It, there's no requirement in there for that. Only if you are going to put in notice that you no longer wanna be part of the commission.
That's one way to get an audit.
I think perhaps maybe you should, um, um, suggest an amundum, addendum to that, um, agreement to include some sort of fiscal accountability?
Yeah, it's gonna, a first-time audit, all is probably.
Fifteen grand?
Yeah, fifteen thousand at least. And, um, 'cause there's nothing to work off of, so I know how auditing firms are gonna go. And, uh, you know, there, there's nothing there.
So, so, so they, they have no accountability for how they spend their money then, is what you're telling us? None?
They couldn't answer the questions when we asked them for the paperwork.
They didn't provide the documentation.
Right.
So if we don't wanna do, if.
I am gonna step in because this isn't an agenda item.
Yeah.
And maybe for future meetings, we should have police and fire updates on the agenda so we can.
That's fair.
Have discussions.
Good.
All right, okay, well, I'll move on, but those were the items that we talked about. And there were some others, but I'm gonna respect, uh, the, uh.
I think the issue is that we're, we're talking back to you. We should just listen to you and, and not comment, Mark, so that's the problem.
This is going to be an ongoing, and it may be worth our while to add it as an agenda item.
Yeah.
So I think you should go ahead and finish your report.
Well, the only other thing I will tell you is what I said there, um, and that is, uh, it's compensation for individuals. And I don't know if this is, is widely understood or, or, um, it's, uh, it's comprehended, but, you know, Terry Johnson, who is heading up the, um, the Fire Department, makes two thousand dollars a year. And he has assistant fire chiefs, and they, I think there's three of them, and they make a thousand dollars a year. The cost of having a director of EMS is seventy-two thousand dollars. Plus the benefits and everything else that goes on with that. And I brought that up, um, just because I wanna make sure that, um, that is understood. So those are the items that were in the meeting, uh, that I attended and that I talked about, and, uh, we'll go from there. Okay, uh, moving on, um, we had Cambridge Classic Christmas, I think it was Cambridge Classic Christmas this past weekend. We, and I just met, and we're gonna get a report here, uh, from Susan. I went to this, and, uh, I noticed that when I was there, Tammy and I, my wife and I went, the crossing on Highway twelve, right up there by the park, Veterans Park, is dangerous. And so I brought that up, that, uh, we need to look at that and however we can help it. But when Tammy and I went down the street, um, on both sides, everybody had a, a great, uh, evening. Sales were up, uh, there was a, a sense of excitement and, uh, a little bustle in our community. So that was good to see, uh, the people were, um, out and, um, enjoying the festivities. And then lastly, um, Willerup, uh, again, is going to be providing a Christmas community dinner from the hours of eleven until one-thirty on Christmas Day. Am I correct, Susan?
Eleven-thirty to one, I think.
Okay. But so if people are out there and you're looking for a meal, um, you don't have any place to go, Willerup Church is, uh, they're opening the doors, and, uh, they did a wonderful job on, on Thanksgiving Day, so. That is my, uh, my report. So I'm gonna move on, joint law enforcement, Susan, you were at this meeting?
Yes. We discussed, I don't know, the, the new police officer.
Sinclair officer, Sinclair.
Okay. Anyway, um, he was talking about vehicle theft, just like everywhere else. They've had some in Deerfield, um, not serious like at Madison, but just reminding everybody. He's had a few OWIs, which to him was unusual.
He had three less.
Oh, wow.
Very high.
Yeah. And then the last item he talked about, um, I kind of asked him, with packages being left on porches and stuff. And he said, it hasn't been a big issue in Cambridge and Deerfield, but there, again, if you can have them delivered somewhere else, um, or have a neighbor take it, or any number of things, so it's not sitting all day on your porch. And then we had a, that was his police report, and then we had a court report, and we just agreed on everything. We had a very short discussion on, um, citations from Rockdale. If there are any, they will go through our village court, um, but there haven't been any so far yet.
They will be contracting with Dane County for just a couple hours a month for, um, ordinance citations in town, so those citations would come to our court. Our original agreement back in two thousand and eleven does have some charges for Rockdale citations. We're going to double court with, check with the courts to see if those still are in line, see how many citations they get, and see if we have to adjust those at all.
Okay, all right. Anything else, Susan?
That's about it.
Okay, um, village office updates.
Um, Texas, been working on Texas, getting all the specials in, everything, um, all the different reports needed.
We did, we have Jefferson bills, we got the Dane County bills today, so those will be going out. Hopefully tomorrow, we'll get those stuffed in in the mail. So that has been a lot of our time doing the different processes we need to do to get those done. Trash and recycling, they were hoping to get the new bins here this week. I have not heard confirmation of what day. I'm working with Advance Dan Badgerland on how the transition will go. Advance last pickup day will be December twenty-sixth. They will pick up the bins following the first Monday in January will be the first pickup for Badgerland. So we're working with them on the transitions. Contract with McFarland has been signed, the, some of the questions we had were answered, changes made to clarify things, working on the election things. Um, I have spoken with DNR, we should be getting a response from them shortly on the Meister site, kind of giving us two directions, what they would want from us if we leave it as green space, and what they would want from us if we were to develop that property. So that should be coming shortly.
Okay, all right, thank you. Moving on, bills, um, we have bills in the amount of twenty-one thousand, eighty-one dollars, and sixty. We have bills in the amount of $21,081.65.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills and set them out.
I'll second.
Any discussion necessary on the bills? Okay. Roll call, or, roll call, please.
Trustee Cunningham, Whitmore.
Yes.
Brannick.
Yes.
Holmbeck.
Yes.
Combiere, Christensen.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes. All right. New business, foundation grant request. Where do we add on this and what are we asking for?
I have three things that have come to my attention. And then if, I want input if the board members have others. Two years ago, we did request funds to add another pier out at the fishing ponds. Since that time, we have created a subcommittee, foundation members, lion club, our staff, the conservation club have been meeting together. They are requesting that we again put in for this. I don't have a new quote yet. The old one was $6,000. They're thinking $6,000 to $6,500. They'll be giving me the numbers for that. Another speed sign, Mark was talking about the traffic on Main Street. We have three of them coming in on 1218, one by the elementary school, one by the middle school. Ultimately, the police would like two more, but the first coming in on Main Street as a means to slow down traffic. They have felt the others have been effective. Future one would be out by the high school then. That too, we're looking for the new numbers. It has been around $6,000 in the past. The last thing that Public Works Committee has talked about is when Main Street was redone 16, 17 years ago, there's bricks in between the curb and the sidewalk. In a lot of areas, those bricks are coming up. They would like to take those out, put in stamped concrete or something along safety issues. They're slippery when they're uneven, it's hard during snow removal, so forth. So Wilbur was hoping to have a quote today for that. The person is in the hospital. He is going to get us the numbers by the end of the week. He will break it down, what the whole project would be, or doing it in sections. So those are the three things that staff has brought to me as possibilities.
What, if anything, is going to be done with the bricks at the.
That will be next year. We have to do some research. Wilbur and I recently met with the historical school who had helped, it was a partnership when the fountain area was put in. They were doing the memorial bricks and so forth. The initial ones were tiles, which are not meant to be outdoors. They're breaking. They have now told us they're done with the bricks and everything. It's a village park, it's our issue now. We didn't know that. They said there had been some meetings in the past and it's now village. So Wilbur and I are working on different plans on how we could replace those, either replacing them or creating a wall or something with the ceramic, but using pavers. But we're not there yet, so we're looking at that for next year until we can.
Had asked previously maybe for a blinky light thing in one of the crosswalks somewhere closer to the main.
We.
Is that not possible?
That's not possible. With it being a highway, we already have two on Main Street. There has been, DOT has, we have questioned if we could. Those two are already too close to each other where they've had to be reconfigured because they were setting each other's off. So the police felt the speed board coming into town would be one way to, you know, we could always approach the state about putting in a stoplight or stop signs or something, but it's not our road, so we need their involvement.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Chris?
We had discussed before possibly asking for $2,000 for the fountain.
We talked about that. We did put that back into the.
Right.
The budget.
But the motor is out with the.
We could ask for the money for the motor. The question is, do we want it for something that's more operational or something that's more, you know, we can put it in, see what they say. But we did get that back in our budget. So that's a decision for, for you to make.
It's a decision that I would like to make. I'd like you to take that under, into consideration, $2,000 for the foundation for that.
To repair the phone?
Yes. Repair it and clean it up.
So it's the Aladdin factor, right?
Mm-hmm.
If you don't ask, you're not going to get it. If we ask, we might not get it, but we might.
Right.
So, you know, and $2,000 can help from a budget perspective, then we could put that $2,000 elsewhere and we certainly could use it this year. So I don't see that there's any issue with including that as an ask.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's an easy one to give, so they may not do as much on the tile or on the brick work, but they could help us on that. So if you can include that then in your, the foundation request. Okay, any other further discussion? All right. Thank you for that. Okay, moving on. Unfinished business. We have got the amended Chamber of Commerce agreement. Now, has this gone through Mary Baling?
Mary drafted it.
Okay. And she's all right with this and?
She drafted it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended Chamber of Commerce agreement.
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion?
I think it covered everything that we talked about. Mary drafted it up, so I don't have any concerns.
Okay. All those in favor of using the amended Chamber of Commerce agreement that Mary Baling has looked at, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Passes. Correspondents?
I did hand out today Trustee Holmbeck's response to questions from the newspaper.
All right.
Yeah, thought it was a great response, actually.
I'm, I'm not sure if the paper is going to print it in its entirety, but I wanted, I wanted my fellow board members to know what my response was and, because I, in some of it, I was speaking on behalf of the Audit and Finance Committee, you know, so I just didn't want any of you guys to be surprised by what I may have said.
Okay. All right. Thank you for.
Very appropriate.
I think it's a copy of that.
Oh, and I just wanted to mention, it's not on the agenda for discussion or anything, but I handed out the pie chart for you, the missing number for the school district is Maybe it's too big is why I disappeared.
Can you repeat that?
1,707,596 dollars and 48 cents.
Thank you.
And as you know, last year, we created these pie charts and put them in the tax bills kind of to show the breakdown.
I like that.
The tax money went.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Moving on, we've got some upcoming meetings. Library Board is going to be meeting on December 11th and the Water and Sewer will be meeting on December 17th. Anything as far as questions, referrals to staff or future agenda items?
I have one item. So about a month ago, I had called Lisa with someone who is a renter in town who had an issue with her landlord and Lisa helped to address that and took care of it. And in that process, I had read through some of our ordinances, saw some things that weren't being met for what are expected of landlords. My husband and I and my brother and his husband, they, we own properties in Minneapolis and rent them out. And in the city of Minneapolis, we need to have a rental license and there's a rental inspector who comes through, and I think for the city of Minneapolis, I believe the inspection is every eight years for, to verify that we are abiding by ordinances and the like. So I'm just wondering if the Village of Cambridge would want to investigate doing some sort of rental license to make sure that our landlords are complying with our ordinances and treating their tenants properly.
Are you also seeing then that there would be an inspection that would be done?
I'm just referring the question to staff and we can do some research as to villages of our size, maybe. I don't know if this would go to the Planning Commission or the Licensing Board or Committee. I'm not sure who would investigate that anymore, but yeah. I mean, if there, if there was some sort of investigation, then, you know, the cost of the license would pay, would need to cover the, you know, like what we do for building inspections now, right? For, yeah. So anyway, I would just think it might be interesting for us to investigate because I think that, I think there are, there's always some, not landlords who aren't down the up and up and I think it would be helpful for us to be on the side of our tenants. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Anything else? I'd just say a future agenda item is Christmas, so I wish all of you a Merry Christmas and for those that were attending this evening and everybody that's out there in television land, so I hope you have an enjoyable holiday. Okay. I would accept entertain a motion for adjournment.